All right, it's 6:30, so I will call the March 7th meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F. So the Chair may inform all other participants that said recording. Harbor Media is recording. If anyone else is recording, if you just unmute yourself and let me know, or use the raise hand function. Okay. Seeing none, I will just say that I'm Carrie Neam, the Chair of the School Committee, and I am participating remotely along with my colleagues Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. Okay. Item two is a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on February 28th, 2022, to discuss strategy related to negotiations of non-union individual contracts and to discuss strategy related to negotiations with HEA Unit C, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
I'll second. Thank you, all in favor, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an "I" as well. So we will go into executive session and reconvene at 7:00 PM in open session. Okay, so we're resuming open session. I'll read this again. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F. So the Chair may inform all other participants that said recording. Harbor Media is recording tonight. If anyone else is planning to record, if you could either unmute yourself and let me know, or use the raise hand function, I appreciate it. Okay, seeing none. I'm Carrie Neam, the Chair of the School Committee, and I am participating remotely along with my colleagues Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. And at this time, there, in addition to the people on your screen, and, oh, sorry, and Elijah Weber, our student rep. In addition to the people on your screen, there are 26 attendees. So item 3.1 is an action from executive session to discuss the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit C regarding the reopening of schools for the 2021-2022 school year and to act as appropriate. Liza, do you want to take this one?
Sure. So this is a unit for HEA Unit C, which are custodians and maintenance workers, and it's an agreement similar to what we came into agreement with Unit A and Unit B for providing additional COVID sick leave benefits and that the staff would then, in return, provide their, report their vaccinations and follow preventative measures for protecting themselves against COVID-19. So I will make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit C regarding the reopening of schools for the 2021-2022 school year.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an "I" as well. So the MOA is approved. 4.1 is minutes of the School Committee meeting held on February 28th, 2022.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 28th, 2022 School Committee meeting.
I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? Liza?
Yeah, I made some edits in the folder. Under our executive session, I added the itemized vote to enter into executive session. And then I also edited under other communications, just clarifying what, how Carrie was copied on parent communications that were made to the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. And I think that was it. Oh, and then the Model UN Conference. It's organized by Boston College. It's not at Boston College. So those were the changes that I made.
Okay, Michelle, do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the School Committee meeting minutes held on February 28th, 2022 with changes made by member Liza O'Reilly.
Well, second. Yeah, all in favor, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness? Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Lys?
Aye.
And I'm an "I" as well. Minutes are approved. Item five is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages committee engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the School Committee. As established by Massachusetts General Law, the responsibilities of the School Committee are to: One, select and evaluate the superintendent; Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and Three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. If anyone would like to speak, okay, use the raise hands function, please. And I see Barbie Lynch has her hand up.
Hi, Barbie Lynch, 3 West Moreland Road. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just making sure I have on a different phone. I had a quick question. When, a few months ago, or maybe a month and a half ago, you made a new policy for this school year for substitute teachers to have a pay raise to $125 an hour. My quick question for you is, when you made that raise, did you make a raise in the same percentage for paraeducators, substitute paraeducators? That's my question. Or did their, the substitute paraeducators' pay stay the same when the substitute teacher role increased?
So that was, the para pay raise was negotiated as part of the reopening agreement. John, did you want to speak to this one?
I think the question was the sub rate was reduced to 125 and I think 113 for the teachers. At that time, no, we didn't increase. There wasn't any vote to increase the para rate for subs.
I mean, the substitute teacher para rate. No, we didn't increase that.
The substitute, the substitute teacher rates are there, but the substitute para, right, teacher par rates, no, those were not changed.
Okay.
So Liza, correct me if I'm wrong, there was something in the Unit B agreement, though, right?
That was for paras who act as substitutes for a regular teacher were provided additional hourly, depending on the agreement. But paras substitutes, I don't remember us changing that.
Right, no, we didn't. Yep. Okay, thank you. Barbie, I don't know if your hand is not as, just you didn't put it down, or if you had something else.
Sorry, I had a quick comment towards it. I just wasn't sure. I can just say, speaking for myself and from one school, that I know there's still a large need for para, sub paras. Increasingly, there consistently has been them. And just hearing from a role within the school, and I don't know if it's okay to talk, you know, like this here, or that there's still a large need from them. I don't know if it's something to think about as far as raising that rate in conjunction with raising the teacher rate. Because I know that if there's two opportunities for me to sub, and one I can make $125 an hour, or the other I can make $14, $125 for the day, or I can make $14 an hour, I'm going to take obviously the 125. And so I think a lot of the subs who have the bachelor's degree would do that as well. And so it could, I don't know if by increasing it a little bit for the sub para, you may get more opportunities, you know, more people to fill in that role. I just wanted to put that comment out there.
Okay, all right, thank you, Barbie. Let's see. Okay, so I don't see any other hands up. So next is communications. And Elijah, student communications are first.
Wonderful. So because it's only been a week, I actually don't have a lot of new stuff. But perhaps unsurprisingly, I would like to talk about the concert tomorrow again. I thought I'd, specifically everyone watching more than those in the committee, because you've already heard about this length, I'm sure. So though I brought it up last, the last meeting, out of a desire to continue to be whatever advocate I can be for the arts, as well as repeated conversations I've had with several of my fellow students in the band program about it in the meeting tonight, that I felt it would be, it should be once more considered, the importance. And I compiled sort of some of my own thoughts and also some of thoughts from a lot of other band students. So while it's not necessarily my purpose to attempt everyone to forsake whatever obligations you have tomorrow at 7:00, I believe that my purpose here, if nothing else, is to elevate the opinions of the student body to you and for no other reason than to let you know the impacts that your work have had, has had on a program that I and so many others hold so dearly. So we are afforded an incredibly unique opportunity by All-Town, which is the opportunity to see the past and future of a program that we all have been in for maybe a short time or maybe a very long time. We seniors look back at the faces of 5th graders, you know, capable of little more than basic musical function and coherence, but with an excitement that can only be attained by 5th graders. And those faces look back at us with a sense of wonderment that I remember feeling in that all those years ago when I was a 5th grader, arising from witnessing the sort of performance that they all one day give. And when they do, they'll turn around and see more of those excited beginners and know the cycle's come around again, which is an incredible thing. The cycle of the music program is the most important. Because while no one stays more than eight years, everybody, band and orchestra, they know what All-Town is. They know what it means. We all know that our actions directly affect everyone else in the gym. A friend of mine told me that she thought of quitting once in 7th grade, but upon hearing the women's ensemble, decided to stay and is now still with us and is one of the loudest advocates for its importance and one of our, really our greatest leaders. Another said his best memories have come from the concert, even though he's only here since freshman year. And he now takes both women's ensemble and concert band. So he has two hours of band every day in school with several drops, which is, I'd never seen anyone do that before. And the common thread is that everyone is just astounded by the incredible sense of community that is allowed to exist by this. So the point of all this is just to say, thanks for continuing to advocate for this program. That's meant so much to many, especially me. I know several administrators have been personally invited to the concert. So I truly hope to see as many people as possible there, because it's an experience that has to be shared. And I just, so I want you all to know that this community is of unutterable importance to everyone in it, and what can it be? So tomorrow at my last All-Town, I get to watch the cycle begin again, too. So I hope as many people can be there, we'll be there.
Thank you, Elijah. Thank you for highlighting this. It is an amazing night to see the progress from 5th grade up through just the high school band and women's ensemble. And I would agree that anyone who can make it, even if you don't have a kid in band, I think it's worth going and supporting the students and just seeing the progress, because it's very cool. I will just tell you that the School Committee, Advisory Committee, and Select Board and Capitol Valley Committee have a joint meeting tomorrow night. So unfortunately, we won't be there. But if we have another opportunity, and speaking for myself, I think definitely I'll be there.
Orchestra has been on Thursday, same time.
Oh, okay. That's great. All right, thank you. Okay. Next is 7.2, communications received by the superintendent. Dr. Maestus is on a NIESK visit. So Dr. Libola, I think you're taking this one.
I am, yeah. And he did have a few other, just quick notes, Carrie. Is it okay if I mention those?
Yeah.
So, hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. The first thing just to report is that all schools are reporting that we transitioned to mask optional for school buses and school buildings with really positive outcomes. And we'll continue to post our COVID positive case data on the district website every Friday. And as of today, just as an aside to the community, Town Hall has now been designated as mask optional. A couple other points, Carrie, which I'll hit at the strategic planning update and the search updates. But the only other correspondence to mention is we did receive a letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority regarding the invitation to enter into schematic design phase of the MSBA process for foster. And it's really a big step. And a lot of progress made by the building committee and the hard work continues toward that road toward replacing foster schools. So that was a really great correspondence to receive.
That's great, thank you. And that's very good news. Next is 7.3, other communications. Does anyone have anything? I'm not seeing any. I just wanted to mention, I mentioned last time that a number of people had emailed the Advisory Committee and Select Board and had copied me and asked me to pass on to you that they were supporting our full budget. We've gotten a number of other ones, just specifically speaking to the Fine Arts Director position that's proposed this year. So I think Elijah kind of highlighted why that would be so important. So I thank everyone for reaching out and for advocating for the school budget and our students. Number eight is unfinished business. 8.1 is a strategic plan update. So Jamie, too?
That was quick. Hey, everybody. Just a quick update. The, we are sending out the survey. It's been slightly delayed from our original plan, and that's because the Equity and Inclusion Working Group was also planning on surveying in the spring. And given our not wanting to overtax the community with multiple surveys within a short period of time, we're actually combining the two surveys. But we do anticipate it being released on March 11th.
Thank you. Next is 8.2, budget update. John, I think this is you.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon or good evening. The, Carrie, I'm going to share my screen. I have a, I'm going to give a budget forecast today for the FY '22 budget. And I have a number of slides that I'll go through with you and explain it to everybody. And how the budget forecast is prepared and... How's that work? Are we seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So here's...
If you can scroll.
And it scrolls, good, okay.
No, it's not scrolling.
Oh, it didn't, did you see that?
No.
It didn't change?
No.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to stop sharing, try it again. Did it scroll now?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, so here's a budget forecast. So typically, when I do a budget forecast, I have to start out with a disclaimer. And that disclaimer is really that forecasting is a very humbling experience, right? Because you're sort of guaranteed that you're going to be wrong. There's no guarantees. The only guarantee is that things between now and the end of the year will change. And the changes could be up and, or they could be down. And when I say up or down, I mean those could be significant. They could be, you know, changes up or down by several hundred thousands of dollars. For everybody's benefit, you know, the forecast methodology, what I do is that you take a snapshot of what the budget looks like. And this snapshot is of February 25th, 2022. And then from there, I would like to take a look at the numbers and see where the budget is trending. You know, what percent of the budget has actually been spent? What percent has not been spent? And then you take a look and I add or subtract adjustments for unencumbered anticipated spending or other offsets. So you know a lot of things that are happening. Not everything gets, most purchase orders get encumbered, but we have, you know, groups of employees where they're hourly. So you don't know what their hours will be. It might be overtime, you know, bus driver routes. They don't get encumbered because they're on an hourly basis. Paras don't get encumbered. So there's a number of groups and other activities that go on where you sort of know or you heard about the spending, but it just hasn't triggered yet. And you said, yes, do that, but the encumbrance hasn't happened. So, you know, with that, I make adjustments to all the line items. The line items, you know, 700-plus line items. You take a look at each one. And the idea with the forecast is to say, you know, by the end of June 30th, 2022, how much will this line item be at and how much will be spent? So I'm trying to project the spending as of June 30th, 2022. And then I take a look at that 2022 budget, that spending, and I compare it to the actual budget. And whatever that difference is, is called a variance. If the budget is, if it's a positive number, that's a positive variance. So basically, that means that the spending has been less than the budgeted amount. And if the variance is a negative, a negative number, then that spending means that I actually exceeded the budget amount. School Department, unlike some of the other departments, is, there's line item autonomy. So basically, what we really focus on at the end of the day is the bottom line number. You don't have to be right within all of the categories of the budget. So with that methodology in place, the, we'll get to the 22 budget updating forecast. You know, I view this as like the perfect sunny day forecast. I'm estimating a positive variance at this point of really $1.7 million. And that assumes that all ESAC grant funds are used in FY '22. And, you know, and from a financial perspective, you know, I'll provide more details. Everything but energy is positive. And this one's a little bit, this budget is a little more complicated because ESAC was an overlay to the budget. So basically, the budget includes all of the, all of the budgeted amount that was included in the warrant. And then ESAC is sort of deducted from that at the very end. It's the way the government accounting, it's the way we accounted for it or voted it for this year. So the budget is, it may look a little bit different than normal because it is an overlay. But we'll talk about, I'll talk about the ESAC separately a little later. This is, these are the detailed accounts that you're familiar with from the budget perspective. And then these are the, these are the variances that I would project between now and year end. So when we see this 3 point, this is 3.1 million. So this, basically, this number here is saying there's actually a $3.1 million variance. However, ESAC is an overlay, so we're supposed to be spending this $1.4 million. So really, when you look at the, when you look at the variance on an operating budget, to operating budget perspective, regardless of the ESAC overlay, it's a variance of 1.732427. Now, I know this is a little bit tough to look at, so I'm not going to talk about this in these details, but you have this in your package and I can certainly provide, you know, bigger copies to the committee at, after this meeting. But I wanted to show, you know, the high-level view of what's going on here. So perhaps it will help explain what the overlay really means. So on the budget variance, and this is what you see, you see 3.106. But the ESAC overlay, and that the overlay is because that gets charged to a different account. So you're not seeing it in the operating budget, right? It's in, it's in a separate budget. And, you know, what we've done is we've encumbered and we've programmed to spend this $1.374 million between now and the end of the year. So you have to remove that from what you're seeing in the budget because it's in the budget numbers. So the actual budget variance without the overlay is 1.72427. Now, what's driving that? So the major budget variance is to normal operations is, we have like the movement variances. There was a very positive hiring year this year, the hiring, the replacements, and the delays. So all of those combined to create a variance here of $559,397. Now, there's, there's others here. I can't say that's a perfect number, but certainly, these are the large numbers. I'm only looking for the large numbers here to kind of communicate the essence of what's actually going on in this year's budget. Underspent contracts. So we had contracts that, you know, for social-emotional. We've hired those people, but the hours and the time they're using isn't what we've actually budgeted. So you're seeing, you're seeing the impact of like underspent contracts. You know, as I mentioned, these contracts, I should probably just bounce back to this page for one second. When you see a like big variance here of $1.9 million, that's because the ESAC overlay is in there. So you have to sort of deduct ESAC overlay, okay? You know, it's also in contracts over here. So psychological services, the ESAC contract for social-emotional counseling was there. So you have to sort of deduct ESAC. So ESAC complicates what you're really looking at, but I can't make up these numbers. So I really have to work with it and try to, try to communicate the context of how, how you need to look at the numbers. Back to the variances. So, and the sped ages out, they actually started commencing in 2022. So, a little stalling over here, sorry about that. And then there's also, we have here is spending from FY '21 grants. This is, you're seeing a number of $181,000, but the grant money that we have received far exceeds us and we've sort of used it and buying certain things. Okay, because there's a whole bunch of other little grants that are maybe included in this. And this grant money, you have to watch out for, because what we want to do is we want to spend it. We have to spend it, okay? If we don't spend it, then we're going to have to give it back, okay? However, we can't spend it against what our normal operating budget would be, because then that would not, we wouldn't be maintaining the effort that we have to spend in order to make sure that we receive these grants on a continuous basis. But anyways, FY '21, we had grants roll over. They have to be spent by '22. So those are being used against this year's budget. And it'll be managed, because I want to make sure that we're spending, making, maintaining our effort from our operating budget. But we do, we never want to give grant money back because that's, you know, that's benefiting the taxpayer. Another item that happened in here is we were actually forced to use our own special education transportation. We just couldn't find vehicles and we couldn't find drivers and contractors couldn't do the work. So we undertook any vehicle that we could find that would move, and we put our drivers in there. So you see, you know, there's a positive variance of $103,000. No energy. This was as of February 25th. We all know things went a little haywire in the past couple of weeks. So this might go up a little bit, but still, it's not going to be anything significant to, you know, offset the real big number here. So, but yeah, so it's a, it's a real sunny day. I mean, this is, everything went in the right direction, you know, this year. And, you know, with, aside from energy. So those are the major budget drivers.
Thank you, John.
Well, I have a...
I'm sorry.
Just a few more, so I can kind of explain more of the context. So on the budget forecast, this is what I, you know, recommend. We have a positive variance roughly of 1.732427. And as I said, that could go up by the end of the year by several hundred thousand dollars, or it could come down, you know, by several hundred thousand dollars, because maybe I missed something, right? When I see numbers this big, it's like I have just combed and combed and combed and combed and said, you know, what am I missing? I can't find what I'm missing. But maybe I'm missing something. So, but I know for sure that there's a couple of actions that the School Committee could take, which I would highly recommend. And one of those is pulling back on ESAC for use in FY '23. Now, I already told in a forecast meeting that we have $400,000 here, okay? So, but I think the $200,000, we know that we can afford the $200,000. If we did that action, you're not going to run out of money. We're not going to run out of money by the end of the year. This is what presumably would be available. So if we have this available, if we pull back the ESAC, that means we use the operating budget to spend. It would actually reduce the available balance to, you know, $1.1 million. Now, beyond that, many of you, back in 2014, 2015, we set up a special reserve account. It was Town Meeting 2014 that actually set that special reserve up. And that reserve is intended to be used for unanticipated out-of-district tuitions and transportation that may come up after the fact. After we get our number, we didn't know about them. And all of a sudden, you know, we have move-ins or, you know, there's, there's some changes and we had no knowledge of that. So if we, if we got into budget trouble, we would have a source of funds that we could, would... So if we, if we got into budget trouble, we would have a source of funds that we could would tap into. This traces back to, say, two thousand and thirteen, or, um, I think it was two thousand and thirteen when we had the budget, um, process. Going through that process, even after we started our budget number in January, the budget increased by some six hundred thousand dollars between January and April. And that was because we had new move-ins and new placements that had to be done. So currently, um, we've had a few deposits to this reserve. It has like some four hundred thousand dollars in it. Often over past years, when we had a little bit of surplus, if we thought we had surplus, we had, you know, uh, discussions about should we deposit some money? I think this time, this year, we know we're going to have a surplus. And I think that it would be wise to deposit, um, you know, or allocate fi- three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to transfer that into the special aid reserve. That would give the school committee a balance of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work with. And, you know, with, uh, for for next year and subsequent years, because that money doesn't go away. So if, um, all of a sudden, you know, we had a nice drop in enrollment for out of district placements from fifty-two to forty-one, there's nothing that says that couldn't turn up tomorrow, right? Because it's not really a function of kids being, you know, coming back, or it 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 is a function of kids staying. But it's it's more of a function of move-ins and all of a sudden, um, you know, you you have to, uh, pay up for the tuition. So if you did that, we'd still have this available balance of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And that's a, that's, it's it's a high figure for this time of year. However, you know, with these big numbers, I I am reasonably confident that I'm not missing something, but it's just hard to believe because the numbers are so big. I think that that's a, that's a a good number to continue going forward with, so we can keep on taking a look at it in subsequent months. One other thing that we might want to consider doing with that money is advancing some of our capital spending to the extent possible. And and this to the extent possible, what I mean there is, what are we capable of doing? You know, we could, we could, we have a capital list that goes on adamant for need and we have items that we want for twenty-three. We're not sure what's going to be funded yet. You know, if we don't get all that funded, we could try to pick some of those and try to get them in motion so that we can get them done. But we have to think about the capacity of our staff as well. You know, can they actually accomplish that or at least get the project running before year end? So those, those are a few considerations. And I think, uh, I wanted to, this is the way the budget was. Okay, so when you look at town meeting, the plan for, you know, in May of, uh, I'm sorry, that's May of twenty-one. Okay, so this was the plan in May of twenty-one when we we had town meeting. So the warrant said, you know, we were using fund balance. The planned usage was two point four million dollars from fund balance. And then we had general government opera of one point two million, and we had Esser of the one point four. So there's a a total of, you know, five million dollars. And and fund balance sort of backed all of this. That's why Essa had to be an overlay, but that's a, that's more of government accountant that I don't, accounting that I don't think anybody has to understand. But the long and short is, so two, two point four million is what was allocated for, um, from fund balance or excess fund balance to balance the FY twenty-one budget. And to the extent any of that seven forties left over, that would lower that number two, um, along with other towns. And that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, yeah, so I think members of the committee do have questions. Can you just explain for members of the public, though, why we can't take the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars that's extra and apply it to something like an arts director or, um, you know, some of these other positions that we're requesting?
Yes, sure. The the, it 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 has to do with municipal accounting. Um, at the end of a fiscal year, the taxpayer has actually appropriated so many dollars to be used in this fiscal year. So when those dollars aren't used in this fiscal year, the law actually requires that those those funds get returned back to the taxpayer, really, right? Fund balance is the taxpayer's account. So you can't, um, you 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 can, in fact, have projects that get underway and have to be paid next year. That's sort of encumbered money. But you can't turn around and say, next year I want to do this. I'm going to fund this, you know, with this year's money, because it's really the taxpayer's vote that allows the government any authority to spend money whatsoever. Does that make sense? But that that phraseology?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Um, so anyone on the committee, if you have questions, if you can use the raise hand function, just because I can't see.
I'm going to stop sharing, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle? I get my head up first. Um, thanks for that, John. Um, appreciate it. I just had sort of two thoughts. Um, and Carrie, you sort of teed it up because in saying like explaining how we can't necessarily move funds from this year to fund future, um, positions. And then, John, also, your comments that what town meeting had approved last year. I do, I do think I appreciate the recommendations you made. Um, I do think we need to figure out a way to utilize some of that excess funds, the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand to cover, you know, capital projects or something else that we can cover. Because I do think that we did go to a town meeting. The townspeople voted to utilize this amount of money for the schools. So that was the the takeaway from town meeting, right? That was the the way the town voted. So I think we should use as much of this as we can to fund the schools, whether that's capital projects or not. And one project that I'm thinking of in particular, which I just thought of as you were talking about it, is we do have a looming issue with the vocational program coming up. We don't have a space after, unless we continue renting that space in Waymouth year after year. So we need to think about that. So that might be something that we could utilize some of this excess funding for.
You know, just as an idea on that, Michelle, too, that space, I mean, I had thought about that. Um, you know, the, I, um, my, my hope is that when the North Fire Station gets displaced, that we could actually move into the North Fire Station.
So before we go any further, it's, there was a, um, because our budget exists in the context of the town's budget, right? Um, and Michelle and John and I attended a forecast meeting at four thirty. Would it be helpful to put that up? And kind of go through that? Is that okay, Liza and Carlos? If he, yeah, okay. All right, I'm gonna share. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, so here's where, here's where we are. Originally, the last forecast we saw, um, they were going to use the stabilization fund, uh, to kind of close the gap with the budget. Um, and then they got some guidance from the state. So that's not, um, per permissible. So that is why this is increased now again. Let's see, they did hear from Plymouth County that it's likely that this four, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and two dollars will be released from Plymouth County for revenue, uh, loss. Uh, that is, they won't know for sure how much we're going to have until, uh, potentially after town meeting. So you can't, uh, we can't exactly rely on it. But there is some money there. Um, let's see. The, it was disappointing news from the health insurance, the G I C. There was a kind of a low forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four, um, dollars of savings there. They were, I think everyone was hoping for better, um, uh, uh, news there, but but it didn't. So basically, the, um, so the excess, the shortfall is one million, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, two hundred and nineteen. And the proposal as of now is to fully fund Article Six, except for any municipal and school additional requests. Now, it's not cast in stone yet, um, because it's still going to Advisory Committee. Um, but but that's where how, that that's how we are at a balanced budget as of now. Um, then the other thing I wanted to share too was, um, okay, so this is the forecast, the five-year forecast. And this is how, um, they, you know, it got to a balanced budget, but this is what the outlook, out years look like too. So, but as of now, our path to a balanced budget is to not fund any additional positions. Um, okay, Liza, did you?
Yeah. Um, so, John, you mentioned four hundred thousand dollars in Esser funds. And I believe it was shown on the forecast too. So are those funds that we already held for fiscal twenty-three and we're already planning, the town is planning on using them?
Those are funds that were actually allocated to twenty-two. And during the forecast meeting, I told the town I thought we could pull back four. Because I sort of, I I know, I I I knew about some big items and stuff. So and and that's a preferable to money going into fund balance because it's impossible to get money out of fund balance. So
Right.
Um, that was a pullback.
So those, but those, so those are already included to cover costs in the FY twenty-three budget?
Yeah, yes, they are, right.
Okay.
But 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 my six hundred proposal would only add two to that, right? So, because I I I think the four, it says that I've already gave them some insight too. So they've been, they've taken, when I give the insight, when I give the insight, they've actually taken the advantage of the insight. And and, you know, today, I'm I'm suggesting another two, so it would be a total of six.
Okay.
It won't add six to the four, though, last.
Okay, so I just, I, so when we look at that forecast, the school budget is going up one percent instead of one point four three percent. And then that one percent, it already includes the four hundred thousand of Esser.
No, I'm sorry. I I have to, I have to see the actual numbers. So let's see. So where are we talking? The, um, you're you're talking about Carrie's forecast, the, the one they shared.
The town forecast.
Yeah.
It reduces the school budget to a one percent increase to sixty-one million, seven ninety-two oh seventy-nine.
Okay, I know they took out a number of positions. Yep. I haven't, it's the, um, I know this is going to be discussed tomorrow in more detail, so I
If you go to the next one, the other ones.
The other one, okay. Yeah, we did just receive it, so, um.
Go to the next page. Go down.
Oops, here we go.
There we go.
Okay.
So the yellow in the middle, the total education budget.
Yep.
So we had voted sixty-two million, six hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. This town's now showing us at sixty-one million, seven ninety-two oh seventy-nine, which is a one percent increase over last year. So we're at an eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollar difference from what the school committee voted to what the town is now
Right.
allocating to us. So could we of the Esser money? So you're saying there's, uh, one point three million dollars in Esser money this year that we could put aside the next year theoretically? But you already put aside four hundred, so there's only another nine hundred?
Well, the, yeah, the Essa money's been spent. I think there's six hundred available. I I I, that's where the total of six hundred is available because we have the the Essa money is is included in that operating budget to be used. Um, but what I'm suggesting is instead of spending one point four, we pull back six so that we only, um, end up spending what we've spent or eight hun- you know, roughly, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but then you've already, it's really only another two hundred thousand that we could apply to next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay. Um, that's what I was trying to
Yep.
figure out. Um, okay, I I do agree with putting money aside for the Special Education Reserve Fund. We haven't done that in a while, as you said, and that is always good insurance. Um, this town forecast is, is disappointing. And if we can work at what we have, I think for this year, anything that we can put off to next year to cover those really critical positions, um, any Esser adjustments, because that is allowed to hold over for multiple years. I think we should maximize how much of an Esser adjustment we can apply for next year. So I think we need to keep working at this. Um, and as you said, it's, it's an ongoing process. And I think, you know, with, with capital projects, it it is, we'll see what we can get done, but also whatever we come up with is going to go into fund balance. So maybe the Advisory Committee will up their fund balance because they know something more is coming, or the fund balance to cover next year's budget. That's what I'm trying to say, because this, the potential of more going into fund balance is going to be there.
Yeah, because that's true. The reality is we're not going to be spending all of the fund balance. I mean, you know, and we don't know what, you know, how the town's forecast is going relative to their spending either. So you know, it, it's, um, right, so if it's two point four allocated, it's like it's not going to be two four four spent. Although, from town accounting, it is spent and then it's put back at a later date, you know, there's a, there's a timing thing. But net-net, if if you had your own savings account, you know, you'd say, hey, I'm not pulling two point four out this year. I'm only pulling out, you know, one point five or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Mike Carlos?
Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, okay. Uh, John, I also support your recommendation of putting some, uh, extra money aside for sped. Because we never know. Um, but also, I would entertain the idea of putting some money aside for Kids in Action. I'm not sure whether you have to specify how you use, you'd use that money. But I think having some money in the reserve, and if we can start building that up, uh, eventually, we can address, uh, full-day, uh, kindergarten, um, you know, free of charge. Uh, but, uh, yes, most definitely would encourage that if it is allowed, if we are allowed to put money on Kids in Action to do that. And I also support the idea of putting money aside to, uh, finally, uh, do some of the major preventive maintenance projects that we have put aside for years. Um, you know, uh, if we really wanted to avoid building new buildings, uh, we shouldn't allow the buildings to fall apart. Uh, and, uh, we should be preventing to the best that we can, uh, by providing those, uh, periodic, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, renovation and whatever we can do. Um, we do now have, uh, two house doctors, which allows us to do small projects. Uh, you know, I think that would be good, and we should take advantage of that. So I would encourage that whatever money you can put aside to do some of the preventive maintenance, uh, let's take advantage of that. And, uh, it is taxpayers' money, and money, voters already approved that we spend this money. Since we cannot approve, uh, use the money for new positions, let's use it, uh, where we need it. Uh, so, um, you know, especially, we got to take advantage. You are leaving us, uh, now this, this summer. Uh, so whatever we can do prior to you leaving, um, you know, might as well do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Uh, Ness?
Hi, so I heard this the second time through today. John, thanks for taking us through in the finance, um, earlier today. Um, appreciate the work. Um, you know, I agree that for two years in a row, we've got a significant amount possibly going back to the town, and we are saying that we are, we are not a funded school, so the optics aren't great. Um, but also appreciate, we can't, we can't take this and apply it to positions. However, we could apply it to things that we might be able to purchase. So I know that we've got a bunch of textbooks that are really old. I know Dr. Jamie's working on, um, curriculum, and he's working on a textbook audit. We could order those kinds of books. Just looking through, um, the budget that you had pulled together on items we might actually be able to buy. There's the assessment tool that we had but forecasted for next year. Um, there's the, sorry, let me get the page. Um, so I I also highlighted the, um, new sped vans that we had highlighted. Um, there was the assessment tool for teaching. So those kinds of things, I think we should just, we've got the time to, um, really figure out what we can do and and kind of like what you had suggested earlier in this fiscal year, uh, coming up with a rolling capital plan for long-term projects. I think we need to figure I think we need to figure out what the schools, what the department heads and what, um, you know, a superintendent and assistant superintendent might need that we could buy in advance. Um, because those kinds of things we can do. Uh, but I also agree that we should move some of that money into the, um, special education, because an out-of-district tuition is really costly if somebody was to move into district. Um, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Ness. Michelle?
Thank you. Sorry to go again. Um, yeah, just thinking this through and hearing everybody's comments. I think, um, it's, I think we also should note that to John's point, like forecasting is very much a, uh, an art, not a science, and a very humbling experience, particularly when you're throwing in a bunch of funding that's coming from the federal and state government that you're not knowing is coming, then surprise, you've got it. But you were not really sure exactly how much that's gonna be, when you're gonna get it, how it's gonna be paid, and what you can use it for. So there has been a, an enormous amount of, um, additional government aid that has been very hard to budget for. Um, so appreciate that nuance to this, John, that that is, is, has been really difficult, um, to, to work with. Um, I'm glad it's there and I'm glad we have it. Um, I think we just should do what we can to spend it, right? I mean, the impacts of COVID are gonna be here for several years, right? Um, and so much of that money came from the government to offset what happened with, um, to students and schools during this pandemic. And I think to the extent we can, you know, hold on to some of those ESER funds and apply them to future years, or to use some of those funds to bring us up to date on some of these capital and other non-personnel expenses, right? I mean, the budget's eighty-four percent personnel, but the rest of it's not personnel. So let's try to apply it to as much non-personal cost as we can.
I, I just want, I, I wanna make sure everybody knows, it's like, it's not like we're not spending money, right? We are spending money, it's just not ours. But.
Right.
So I don't, I don't want people to think it's like, hey, we're squeezing, squeezing, squeezing to save, save, save. We're, we are, we are spending money, um, just not our money first.
Right.
Ness, did you have something else? No, okay.
No, sorry.
Okay, so I would support the recommendation for the special ed reserve fund for sure. Um, and I think I would echo what, uh, hearing from everybody else, if there are other ways we can use it. Um, I think we should do that, um, including, I don't know what the feasibility is for, um, funding some of the things that we have for proposed for next year's budget, the sped vans and the, um, assessment tools. Um, but if that's a possibility, I mean, maybe we do that, you know? Um, okay, I see Joshua Ross has a hand up.
Hi, Joshua Ross, one twenty-five Wammetuck Road. Um, so I think we all know if money goes back into fund balance, it's like Fort Knox, we will never see it again. And speaking as someone who heads up an organization who asks parents for money year after year to subsidize the school budget, honestly, it's a little insulting that we keep giving money back, that we ask parents to fund more and more of these things. So I've been at these meetings long enough to know this is sort of becoming a, a common occurrence. And I understand that forecasting is not exact science, but we should spend, no, we, you guys should figure out how to spend this down to the last dime, because that's what you told people at Tommy you were gonna do. And I know you can't fund positions for next year. But I don't see why you can't go out and hire a fine arts director tomorrow and pay them on this year, and they'll be on the payroll. Nothing says you can't hire, town approves money for you to use this year, so use it this year. Hire a fine arts director tomorrow. And then use, they'll be on the payroll this year. You can use that money till June thirtieth. Um, I know you're getting a lot of calls and a lot of emails about this, but it is gonna be really bad optics if we give back another million dollars back into fund balance this year. So that's it.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Josh. Becky Lynch?
Hi, Six Concord Circle. Um, this is the same thing that pretty much Josh says. I mean, I'm just thinking about things, you know, when we, we had our first kindergartner enter, um, Hingham, the plan was for kindergarten full day to be like a two to three years where they would be paying, but, um, for the full day. And, you know, seven years later, eight years later, we're about to send another kid, third kindergartner through. And, you know, really not much progress has been made on that either in terms of funding kindergarten fully. And I know that half-day is free, but having worked in the school system, I do know that the kindergartner, the kindergarten class and the services that are offered run over a full day. So if a child were to pick the free half-day option, they would miss so much. It's, it's not really an option in terms of what is expected, um, for a kindergartner to achieve by the end of the year in our, you know, in our Hingham Public Schools. Um, so just another thought is, we still haven't attacked that issue of parents still paying four hu- four thousand dollars for kindergarten. Um, seven, I can't remember if it's seven years or eight years, eight years later from the first year of going full day. Um, and, you know, I haven't heard that discussed either, like, how are we chipping away at that? Um, so just another suggestion for ways to spend money. You know, wha- what do we need that four thousand dollars for per person that brings in over a million dollars to the school budget? Just kindergarten alone, is that the plan for forever? Are we making plans for how to get rid of that, or, you know, supplement that money in another way? Um, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Becky. Um, one thing I'll just say, because we did discuss this, this part, we have pretty much every year, um, as part of the budgeting process, and it's moving slowly, but we kind of agreed to keep the kindergarten fees level, so that more and more gets absorbed into the budget over time, um, so that it's eventually to get to free full-day kindergarten. Um, because I think a lot of us share that goal. Uh, Lauren Devol? Nope. I think Ally's hand is up. I don't know if I don't think Ally's hand is actually up, so I think Diane Denapley is next.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, hi, Diane Denapley, sixteen Gardner Street. Um, I, I, I would echo everyone's sentiment, and I know it's a joint one, Matt. Um, to have any money to spare is a wonderful thing. Um, and Carrie, I know you said, please go to the, the directors. I would ask the teachers, being a former teacher, I think if you ask your teachers what they need in the classroom, they will easily come up with a way that would benefit the kids hands-on to spend that money, whether it be additional books, whether it be sensory friendly items, whether it be maybe a new iPad for a kid who might be struggling on an old one, uh, the need is there. And just, you know, please continue to work at it and to spend the money wisely. But I, I know that the teachers and this, the parents will come up at new, the school committee with wise ways to spend it. So thank you. Thank you, John, for all your work. Um, I've learned so much from you about budgeting. It's, it's amazing and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Diane. All right, Lauren, I think. Yeah?
Hi, Carrie, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, Lauren Devola, ninety-eight Black Rock Drive. Um, I wanted to piggyback off of something Carlos said specifically about kids in action in the budget, um, as it ties to attendance, because I know that I get a lot of feedback in the community about people when they're kind of choosing their schools or choosing whether or not they're coming back to Hingham, and knowing that kids at action doesn't guarantee spots where St. Paul's does, for example, and Derby has extended day, and Old Colony has extended day. So I think that's a very prudent point to what Carlos was saying about the budget, and just kind of looking forward and projecting and hoping to get a lot of those students back, as you guys have mentioned in past meetings. Um, I know actually a few families in particular that are not coming back only because of childcare, um, and they're staying at St. Paul's. Um, it's disappointing, you know, knowing that they would, probably if they'd applied, they may have gotten a spot at kids in action, but they're just like not even willing to take that chance where they have to commit to St. Paul's so early. Um, and just one other point about the special ed van. Um, I don't want to speak kind of too specifically about anybody individual, but on our bus, I will say that not only is a sped van for certain of the students, like, you know, gonna be more of a comfort to them, it's a big, big safety issue. Um, on the elementary side, we have some kindergartners that are little and have to be strapped in. And the size of the booster seats in the elementary buses is for a toddler. So in particular on our bus, and I won't say which bus I'm on, because I don't want to like zero in on anybody, but we actually have a kindergartner who doesn't fit in the booster and does not sit in his seat at all. Disrupts the bus driver, disrupts the entire, um, bus ride. Uh, might ring a bell to some of the people on this call or on the committee, but it's extremely dangerous for him and for everybody and the bus driver and the pedestrians and everybody driving in our community. It is a huge, huge problem. So I'm really glad that you guys are talking about it. I think buying a van makes sense. Just tell me how to vote and I'm happy to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So, um, thank you, John, for the presentation, putting it together. And, um, yeah, we'll continue to work on this. We have some time, so. Um, and for anyone who's interested, there will be a joint meeting with the school committee, select board, advisory committee, and capital outlet committee tomorrow evening on Zoom at seven PM. And then the school committee and ACES, which is the education subcommittee of the, of the advisory committee, will be meeting on, um, Wednesday, the ninth, at eight PM too. So if you're following this, those would be good meetings to, to attend. Um, eight point three is to receive an update on the Foster and East Elementary Schools principal searches. Jamie, is that you?
Yeah, hi again. Um, so the Foster Principal Search Team met last week, and we've identified three candidates to move on to the next phase of the interview process, which involves meeting with the central office team, as well as, um, reference checking and, and meetings with, uh, Dr. Adams. Uh, so the Foster, we are on target to have our candidate announced, uh, by the end of March, beginning of April, as planned in the, um, timeline. The E search actually closes today or closed today. Um, so tomorrow, that East team is getting together for their training and orientation session. They'll receive the packets that have been received. Um, I will double check, but, um, we, we didn't receive as many applications for East that we did Foster, uh, but we do have a couple of our candidates who have asked to be in both pools. So we'll sort that out tomorrow, uh, but that is on target, right? At this point, um, for, uh, identification of, of the final candidate by the end of April, uh, as outlined on the search team, uh, or in the search timeline, I should say. So, um, I, and I want to thank again, uh, both Jen Benham and Carrie Ni for your service, uh, to our schools on that search committee. And I look forward to working with Michelle and Carlos, uh, tomorrow with the, um, E search, so.
Great. No, and thank you for all your work on this too. It was, it was really fun. And we got, we could, there we talked about some really, really great candidates, so it's, it's exciting for that building. Um, okay, so next is to receive an update under Director of Business and Support Services search. I know that's underway. I know Susan's running it. Um, do you have information on that, Jamie, or do we?
So just really briefly, uh, she wanted me to just let the community know that she feels that we're on target. They met last week for their training, um, and they're on track to meet the timeline, um, as identified in the search process. So, um, no more news beyond that to report, but it's in progress.
Great. All right, thank you. Um, eight point five is to discuss school committee meeting venues. We had talked about this at the last meeting, and, um, because we don't really have the technology just now at town hall to do, um, a complete hybrid meeting, uh, what, what I heard, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we want to get back in person, um, sooner rather than later, um, to meet, because we have better discussions in person. Um, but we also don't want to lose the accessibility of our meetings for considering that the people who are most interested in it are parents and staff, school staff. Um, so we were trying to figure out a way to do hybrid, and there's an idea, and thank you, Liza, for researching this too. Um, I'm gonna pull up, um, the packet. So Harbor Media does provide live streaming, so they can do it through their YouTube channel, um, which would work as far as viewing the meetings here. Um, so here, here are their options. Um, so they can, they can go live on Harbor Media. I think, believe they can do it from the conference room. Um, if not, we may be able to find another room in town hall. Um, so it would be live on, on television, so we would be meeting, um, in person. But, and it'll be streaming, but then the other option, and this is just an example of what another, just another school committee does, this is Middleborough. Um, so they, they allow people to comment on the YouTube stream itself, or there's a, an email address, questions@middleboroughk12 dot ma dot US, um, that people can, and somebody on the committee is monitoring those questions as you meet. So it's a way for people to watch and participate. Um, it's not ideal, because you can't, you know, ask a question, like orally, but, um, but it is one way to, um, to move forward with this. So I was wondering if anyone had any thoughts on that. Oops, oh, Jen?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, okay. So, no, I think these are all, um, thank you for this update. And thank you to Liza too for providing this information. Um, just one thing I thought, um, that I had seen on a couple of other school committees, um, not necessarily locally, uh, but during their public, it's hard to the calling in and asking questions, but there's a option where they can register in advance and then provide, um, almost like an oral testimony, as long as they registered by, I don't know, like say three o'clock that day. And then they would be given, um, a certain link to call in, and that way we could hear the person, we wouldn't be able to see them. But, um, just something I had read about and thought, just throw it out there as an idea.
Yeah, that's great. Could you, um, find out how it, like the nuts and bolts of how that works, the logistics?
Yep. I, I saved it all, so I'll send it out.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any other thoughts? Miss, Eliza?
Um, I, I, I think it's worth trying the, um, the way Middleborough does it, because one benefit of Harbor Media doing the live broadcasts on YouTube as opposed to the cable station is I've heard that there are many people who have cut the cord on cable, or if they're traveling, or, you know, even in the summer, are down at the Cape or somewhere, that then they could watch the meeting on the YouTube feed that they wouldn't be able to see live on cable. Um, and then Harbor Media uploads the recorded meetings anyway to YouTube, so, um, it's sort of similar platform. So I think it's, i- it offers something, um, you know, until we get all the microphones and the cameras and everything, um, I think it's as close as we're gonna get, so I think it's worth trying it.
Great. Michelle?
Thank you. Um, I do as well, my one question is just noticing on Middleborough, and I think we've learned that most districts only allow public, only allow questions and comments during the public comment period versus on each individual, individual agenda item like we do. So would we still offer that? Would we still offer that, that people could ask questions, comments during the, um, during individual agenda items and just, I guess it would just be the same way, right? To take them via either the YouTube or, um, email?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think we should.
Um, yeah, I agree.
Our practice. And then what they do is they assign somebody to monitor, um, the YouTube channel and the, it, there's a dedicated email inbox to do that. Um, so that could, yeah.
All right, that's, that was just my next question. I was wondering how sort of, is it commercial? Oh, you're trying to run the meeting and look at the email box, or, or was there like a timeframe that people have to, like to, um, Jen's point, like one of those things where you have to log, you know, sort of have to register by three o'clock that day to ask a question or something, but.
Yeah, and we can, we can try, you know, we can start and see, we keep it as close to how we've been doing it as possible, and then see if we need to tighten it up, um, to make sure, but.
Okay.
But we'll have to assign someone to, um, to, to keep an eye on that, because I don't, as, as chair, I think I wouldn't be able to run the meeting and do that at the same time, so.
Right.
But it's, it's not uncommon. There are a lot of districts, even in normal times and in person, that have, you know, will allow people to submit emails, um, for questions. Uh, Carlos?
Yeah, no, that's, this is great. Uh, thank you, Liza, for researching and, uh, the, you know, I, I like the recommendation that, uh, we do this through YouTube and, um, and continue, uh, getting feedback from, uh, the parents and those participating. I think we should do this ASAP. Um, if it is possible to do it the next meeting, the twenty-first, that would be even better. But, uh, I'll let you, the chair, so I'll let you decide. Thank you.
Yep, and I can, if, if we have consensus, I can contact Harbor Media and see if that's a possibility. Yep, and I can, if, if we have consensus, I can contact Harbor Media and see if that's a possibility. Uh, Ness?
Yeah, I like the um, Newton, I think, does the submitting questions as well, and I think that has worked well for them. And I'm going to go back to Worcester because I, I do feel like they, they have the ability to have this big screen in their room where they can watch somebody who pops up and asks a question. And it seems to me that we've got some budget money that we could use for the technology if we need to buy it.
That's a excellent point. So maybe we can look into that. Um, okay, so I, I can check with Harbor Media and we'll start with this and then um, we can see where we go from here. But um, but no, I'm looking forward to meeting all of you in person again and um, that'll be good. All right, so nine point one is to discuss the school committee warrant message. I put a draft in the packet. Um, it's not due until I think the fifteenth, fourteenth or fifteenth. If anyone has any thoughts on that to this point, uh, Carlos? Oh, Ness, did you have some? No, okay. All right, so um, would I just ask, because I, I did just drop it in this morning. So if um, if anything comes up, if you could just let me know by the thirteenth, if you have any, anything you want to chat, change or add to it, um, that would be really helpful and we can do that. Nine point two is to discuss the school department annual report. That's not ready yet, but I, when I, when I was thinking about this and I want to get your thoughts on that, that we would take that warrant message and just sort of expand it, use some of the graphics from John's presentations and um, to kind of illustrate and tell the budget story. It would be basically be the same outline as the warrant message, but um, but would have a little more detail in that. Does anyone have any thoughts, are there things we should include in it?
What is your deadline?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth. Okay, I'll send you some comments.
Okay.
Carrie, I don't know if the, the annual report message is as much about the budget as it is just about the schools.
It's depend, well, it, it's been that, like that in the past. I kind of think because the, the whole goal of town meeting is the warrant and, and the budget, like I, I, I wanted to make it a little more about budget. Because it's about how tax dollar fund, money is being spent and definitely about the, the school and what's going on and the needs, but uh, I kind of went, I looked at what other towns do and I kind of wanted to move away from just, you know, this athletics is doing great and you know, music's doing this and, and all that, because it, that's all important and it's great to know, but that can get out in other ways, but where town meeting is about the budget, um, and the way we're spending the money, I think it's.
But, but the annual report is a summary of every committee's work that they've done. It's that paperback book.
Yep, oh, I know.
So yeah, I, 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 I think we, we should include things that have happened in the schools. I, I, you know, I think we should tee it up of override and what's coming and that we feel we haven't had enough resources to do everything we've wanted to do. But I don't want to miss what, what we have accomplished.
All right. Yep, I can work with Gary on that and I'll, what I'll do is we'll do that and I'll send you um, the draft and if you could just let me know separately if you want to add anything or change anything in it. Anyone else have anything they want to include in that in addition to? No? Okay, uh, nine point three is to hear an update on the establishment of the HPS District Wellness Committee. Liza and Suzanne, I think that's you guys.
All right.
Hi.
So Suzanne, I'll just introduce this. Um, by state law, every district is to have a wellness committee that sort of oversees wellness in general, um, food service, physical education, health, um, staffing, nursing, everyone. And um, when we updated our policy manual, we recognized that this was something we hadn't necessarily been doing. And so, um, so we talked it through with policy and then we have our wellness subcommittee as well. And so the Executive Director of Student Services is identified as the Chair of the Committee. And so that's Suzanne's role. And so she's going to take us through. Um, we're going through the process of establishing the committee and getting it up and running. So now hand it over to Suzanne.
Thank you, Liza. Um, so we currently have membership, um, obviously from student services, a school committee, uh, physical education and health. And we are going to be recruiting for parent representative, student representative, someone from food services. And someone from the public in general. Uh, so we'll be recruiting for those um, folks to come and join us and we will be having two meetings this year, one on April seventh and one on June seventh. Uh, just to get us started so that we can start to develop our annual goals and objectives so that we can fully launch um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Great, thank you. Um, it's, I'm really happy that we're getting this going and thank you for all your work on it. All right, so does anyone have any questions? For Dr. Venice on that? Okay, seeing none, we have nine point four is to review the proposed two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year calendar. Uh, Jamie, is this you?
Yeah, hi, uh, that is. Uh, so at this stage, I presented two drafts to the committee in your packets. Uh, there's a draft A and a draft B and I'll explain a little bit around where those drafts uh, sort of originated from. Just to back up, um, I've been having um, very great meetings with Dr. Adams, uh, as she begins her, begins to transition to the district. And one of the things that she had asked that I look at thoughtfully with the calendar is um, expanding professional development opportunities, right? So within the contractual limits of, of what we could actually do to increase that PD time. What uh, the second calendar does is it tries to introduce um, additional professional development release days on the first Wednesday of the month. It also adjusts um, the conferencing uh, to, to coordinate around uh, reporting on student progress, particularly at elementary. So the first draft, draft A that you see, um, simply rolls over last year into this year. The one thing I'll note is on the current, both of the calendars, the first day of school is proposed to be Tuesday, September sixth. That's the Tuesday after Labor Day. It's also a statewide primary. And so we had gotten that heads up from the clerk's office. I spoke with, because as you know, our middle school and our high school are both used as uh, voting locations for the community. The middle school um, said they would prefer to be in school. Their voting doesn't disrupt, as it might the high school, sort of the comings and goings. After connecting with the high school, uh, Mr. Swanson requested a bit more time to coordinate with his leaders uh, around that request. He is leaning toward not holding school on that day because the amount, it's the first day of school, it's fairly chaotic in a controlled chaos, right, relative to the first day of them trying to find their space. And then to have the community coming and going for the, for the voting, um, he just felt added a layer of potential stress that may not be how this, they want the year to begin. So um, and Gary's also uh, coordinating with Carol Falvey, our town clerk, to sort of get her perspective on her thoughts. So the only question mark really i- is sort of that first day of school. Whether school begin on Tuesday, the sixth or Wednesday, the seventh, depending on the primary. Is TBD, but I'm happy to take any comments from the committee or feedback there. At this stage, the calendar drafts were shared with the HEA uh, late Friday afternoon. With the understanding that this is simply just, uh, tonight is really collecting feedback on those models and I'll coordinate that with Dr. Adams. I'll make sure we get feedback from our principals. We'll be, I'm actually moving the elementary tomorrow morning. And we have the leadership team, the, the, um, administrative team meeting with the principals coming up with, with Dr. Bass, as we're going to cover the calendar then. I'm also anticipating some feedback from the association. So the goal is at this point to sort of show you the two models, uh, collect some feedback and then come back at the next meeting in March, hopefully with a final draft for your consideration and vote. So, so to talk a little bit about option B, so option A again, simply rolls over this year to next year. The other model introduces additional professional days, um, really for everybody on the first Wednesday of the month. The other thing it does, which I think, uh, I've been, I've been visiting the elementary faculties, getting feedback on how HTSS is going and, and sort of thoughts for adjustments or revisions as we head into next year. The feedback that we received there was to, to sort of, they, they still wanted to maintain the four conference days. So remember from the old models, we had four conference days for elementary, the opposite month would have been professional development for them. What they asked is that we try to um, sort of adjust those days to align with reporting. So for example, you'll notice the, the midterm check-in um, would be sometime in late November. And the next week, we're proposing a release day for conferencing around midterm check-ins. Um, the other one is because elementary has now moved to two terms, uh, this is, is a, a fall and a winter term, term one, term two. Their report cards go out at the end of uh, January to beginning of February. Um, so what you'll note there are actually two release days back to back for the specific purpose of parent conferences. Um, the volume of conferences that the elementary teachers hold is significant. And many of them with one afternoon either have to cut the, in the appointment times down at ten or fifteen minutes to see everybody. Or they end up scheduling outside of work hours or additional days or, or evenings to get all the conferences in. And so um, we tried a model where we would sort of put two of them back to back to, to allow more time uh, for the parent, for the teachers to actually engage in meaningful dialogue around student progress. And that aligns with the, with the, the term two report card being sent out at elementary. And then you'll notice the fourth day, um, later in the, in the winter, spring, I think it's sometime in March, where that's the next midterm check-in for the elementary term two, uh, with conferences then the following week. So again, this is just uh, literally a draft to trying to, to capture the feedback we've received from a lot of different constituents. And trying to put together a model. Um, as you know, as we head into next year, then with this, the completion of the true digital plan, the ongoing work and equity to inclusion. The understanding of some curriculum adjustments, we have curriculum adoptions coming up, uh, the need for professional development time is significant. Um, and so in discussion with Dr. Adams, we felt like, let's try to think through a model that tries to incorporate more of that time uh, in order to give our educators the time they need to um, really sort of learn and grow as the district learns and grows. So, and I will note that with those additional days, because I, I'm sure somebody may have this question, uh, we did do the calculation and with Model B, which has the introduction of additional release days, the high school is at nine hundred and ninety-nine hours of instruction and we're required under law to have nine hundred and ninety. Middle school is at nine hundred and ninety-six hours of instruction. Uh, and again, we need nine ninety and elementary is at nine hundred and twenty-nine hours of instruction and they're required to have nine hundred. So even in Model B with those additional days, we're still well within the requirement of time on learning from the Department of Education. And as you know, our contract doesn't allow for full day professional days, right? Is that would have been ideal to try to add a couple of full days in, but under the current uh, structure, we're really left to the release dates to try to run the PD. So um, those are the initial drafts. And I'm happy to take any feedback and go back and make some adjustments. We also are beginning feedback from the union, we're beginning feedback from the administrators uh, and feedback from the town, particularly about that election day. I hope I captured that okay.
No, that's perfect. Um, I think the only other thing I wanted to bring up is there is an election on November eighth as well. Um, we've heard from the clerk. So whatever we do, we should probably factor that in as well if it's disruptive in the buildings. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Carlos?
Yeah, I also the recommend that if you are considering uh, doing any PD on uh, on Election Day, that if you could please stay away from both schools, the high school, middle school would be great. I know that in the past, the, although uh, they suspended the school, uh, there, there was some type of professional development happening at the middle school. And uh, obviously they still take a lot of the parking space and it's still disruptive. So if you could consider that, that would be great.
Yeah, so there, there is no consideration of staff in when when we don't have, when there, if we don't, if we don't have school because of the election, the staff wouldn't be there because it would be a workday without kids. I do think to your point, there was some agreement made a few years ago around the middle school, but that's not a current agreement that we have. So if we don't have school, the staff would not be coming in for PD.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. Um, thanks for these options, Jamie. Um, I think it's, it's really important. I know the professional development is just key, given, particularly given everything that has gone on over the last two years. There's learning loss to make up for. There's so much work to do. I think we all learned during COVID, right, the spotlight on how much the schools have to do and how much responsibility there is and it seems like, oh, it's a school calendar, a hundred and eighty days out of three hundred and sixty-five. How hard can it be? But it turns out, it's actually pretty hard.
Yeah.
Pretty hard, actually. Um, and so I do, I, I do like the idea of the additional professional development days. I mean, I think it's, I, I mean, I think it's of the utmost importance to the, to the staff. I'm just thinking of if there's a way, and this is not for you, but I'm wondering if there's something we can do, because I do know that for some, some families that it will be kind of challenging um, to have a more, more uh, half days or certain days. And I'm just wondering if there's possibly a way, I guess I'm putting this out there to the rec center or the library, if um, we could try to find some ways to like offer programming for kids on those days. I don't know if Kids in Action could take on something like that, but just, just a thought. Um, you know, people, you know, sign up to take advantage of those days, so. Throwing it out there, if anybody on the call has any great ideas in the town to offer something.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Liza?
Yeah, so um, one thing, Jamie, the, the March Conference Day wasn't on here because I did know that March is a really long month. But I like the um, the option B because having the half day every single Wednes, like first Wednesday of the month for all levels is much easier for families to deal with consistency wise. The one suggestion, I don't know how this would go over, but um, years ago, when we had half-day kindergarten, the kindergartners had full conference days around this time. And so it was like a Monday, it was like a Friday, Monday, Tuesday. So the kindergartners had a long vacation break. And that was actually awesome for parents because I got tipped off to it and I got the first conference slot. We were able to take off. But you might want to consider, I don't know if you could do full day conferences for the elementaries as opposed to the half-days and then put, wrap them around a weekend. Because it might give some more flexibility to families of how they plan their time. Because that, that worked really well back then. I mean, I agree with Michelle of if, you know, community-wise, we can do something for kids. But having, you know, two half-days, that, that gets complicated.
It really does. It's not ideal at all. I think one of the, one of the, we would have to sort of um, we would have to sort of work with the association on that because any day the kids aren't there and they're there is a part of their total workdays. So like, so it would have to be another additional, sort of essentially another workday because we couldn't count it as one, one of the days toward the one eighty. Because it's, see, that's why we went for the relief days because they still count toward the one eighty count. But if we just did a full day of conferences, it would be a workday for the faculty, but it wouldn't, the, it wouldn't count toward the one eighty for the kids because the kids aren't there.
Ah, okay. All right. Um, okay, well, never mind.
No, but it's a good thought. I, I get what you're saying. Trying to sort of wrap them around sort of naturally occurring breaks would, might be helpful for families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Tim?
And, and people talked about how difficult it is to uh, make this calendar. I think one tool that we have this year that's made it easier is the cultural calendar. So I just wanted to add, once again, give a shout out to the Higginson Community Council for helping us put that together. Specifically to Rena Patel, who did, put in a lot of hours to help ease this process for us.
Yeah, I, I echo that. She did a fabulous job. So it'll be good to get the calendar and the cultural calendar out there together this year too. So, um, Michelle? Sorry. Since you're on the cultural calendar, I was going to bring, I don't know, next. Um, I did, Jamie, could you just um, tell us and sort of clarify how, like, just for folks listening and like how the, what the cultural calendar is for and how it's used at the different schools? If you could explain that to folks.
Yeah, yeah, so the cultural calendar is our attempt to um, bring a level of visibility to the variety of religious practices um, in the community. It's also used by our faculty uh, to ensure that we don't have any long-term assignments or homework or work on particularly. or work on particularly major observances. The calendar is wonderful. We're actually, what you're seeing right now is just a rough draft. We hope to include the, sort of the high holidays, at least as a mention on the main calendar. But if you do note, we, we actually, the calendar captures literally month by month, every major observance across all religions and groups. And so the, the major of the high holidays or the, the major days that you see in the initial grid is used by our faculty to ensure that we don't, we don't assign work or we don't have homework or major projects due during high holidays. We don't necessarily, unless, unless through discussions, the committee would want to consider taking some of these off for holidays to observe the holiday. I know some districts will take off some of the major Jewish holidays. But again, we didn't do that, but we are planning to reference them. So people have an understanding in the community around religious observances and different cultural celebrations that happen in our community.
Great, thank you. Ness?
Yeah, I would just comment that the, if we don't do, so back to the primary. If we don't do the first day of school at the high school, but we do it at the middle school, then that causes issues with, you know, first day, last day of school and transportation because then we'd be paying four buses on double the days.
Yeah.
Yeah, an additional day, right. So just something to consider as we're thinking about this.
And, and this year, we didn't have the school, it was a holiday observance on the Tuesday because what was it, what was it again, Carrie? Rosh Hashanah, thank you. It was, so that was a major religious observance or the Jewish faith that the cantor reached out and asked us if we could potentially pause. So we actually, this year, you can notice, we didn't go back till Wednesday. It really wasn't the end of the world and we just observed Tuesday as the holiday. So if we went into next year, you'd see a similar model, it would just, we would not be having school because of the elections, the primary as opposed to our religious observance.
Michelle? You're muted.
So sorry, God, after all this time. Sorry, Jamie, I just reminded me of something else. On the calendar, I noted that kindergarten looks like it's starting the same day. I thought it said K through 12 and I just thought.
Oh, no, it should be one. I'll make that adjustment. I'll make that edit. So kindergarten does start a few days later for the return, the, the orientation activities and to get the kids settled. And we don't necessarily in the first days, we want to get the one to 12 settled. And then we introduce our kindergartners into the mix. But I'll make that edit. Thanks for catching that, Michelle.
Okay. I know that was a long, I know that was a long week for those kiddos. Ease them into that whole five day week thing.
Okay, we have a couple of hands up. Becky Lynch? I see Lindsay Cruzer.
Hi Carrie, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My question was just with the proposed calendars, when does it put school ending both on the normal day and with the five emergency days building? Cause it seemed like one sort of oddity with ending on, or with starting on Wednesday this year is that if we have to use our last emergency day, we go into like a new school week to end, which I think is not ideal. So I was just curious how this affected the end of school.
Sure. So under both models, if we, so I guess it's, it's a conditional answer because if we hold school on September the 6th, then the last 180th day of school becomes Thursday, June 15th. If we observe the election and we don't have school, then the last day of school would be Friday. The 180th day of school with no snow days would be Friday, June 16th. Now, I will note that the five additional makeup days because of the Juneteenth holiday being observed on Monday, the 19th, we don't actually get a full week of school to make up. So it would, if we have additional days and need to use all five, it may push us into the last day of school being, and I apologize, I just closed my window and I lost it. It would put us into the last day of school being Monday, June 26th, which would be the Monday of the last week of June. But that's also predicated on using all five snow, uh, snow days or no school days.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, Becky Lynch? There we go.
Thank you. Right now, now? Jamie, is it possible to get the plan up on the screen? The Plan A and the Plan B for people to see? Cause I don't know, maybe it was just my phone that glitched out, but like it kind of got confused. I got confused what they're asking for. So are you asking for extra half days per month? Every extra half days, two times a year? I think it was an audio issue there and I think it might be helpful for the visual learners maybe to see it.
Sure. So, so just to be clear, right now, the district already has monthly release days.
Right, right, right.
What this does is it adds additional days. Actually, one of them is a, is a PD, is a conference with no PD for elementary because it follows the right way. But I'll certainly, let me just share my screen real quick.
Okay.
And I'll show you. So this is option A. So this is the option that simply rolls over this year's calendar into next year's calendar. And what you'll note is there's the first day, although that may change depending on where we go with the election. And then you'll see EEP and ES and those are the codes for early release for elementary conferences, which would coincide with the midterm check in. And then the secondary would have a release for professional development. Now, the difference here, what makes it different for the additional days is later in the spring. So the district's kind of all on the same page with monthly releases. Until you get to the spring and then the secondary drops a few. And actually the middle school has an additional one where they do the, the fifth grade move up day for grade six. So they actually have another release day just unique to the middle school. And so, but this one right here just shows you where the calendar would be if we just rolled over. This is option A. Option B then, the start and end dates are the same. But what you'll notice now are early releases for PD on the first Wednesday of every month at all levels, except for February. That's what it was because for February, it's perfect timing with the report cards. So, so the first release for report cards would be Tuesday, the 31st and then the, and then February, the first would be the elementary conferences where secondary on the first would have a release for PD.
I mean, I thought, yeah, just so the high school teachers on those, they'll be doing professional development. Middle school will be doing professional development and it's just the elementaries that, that would be getting extra conference time. Is that correct?
Correct. So that the elements, the secondary conferences were never historically scheduled into the calendar.
Right.
Elementary was. So what we did here at the elementary conferences is we just moved them around to coincide with reporting for the midterm check in. That's why you'll see one here on the 16th of November. You'll then see the back to backs, January into February, that's for report cards. And then the last one is, oh, Liza said it wasn't here. So it should be somewhere at the end, in the middle of March, which I'll make sure this is updated to reflect that. I don't have my term dates on me, but I feel like it's somewhere in the middle of March. Would be a Wednesday release date, again, just for elementary for conferencing.
Wednesday release, okay. So is that really the only, I don't know, it's, I guess it's not seeing them next to each other, just the way this is laid out. It's hard to really see what the difference is. Like they're talking about adding extra programs. And I'm trying to figure out, is it really that much of a difference or not? It's hard to see. And then I guess I'm just wondering, where is the need coming from? Are the elementary teachers saying they need more time for conferences? Like, I guess I'm wondering where the need is coming from. Is there data showing like how many conferences they're able to log during those half days? How many people they reached out that denied contacts or I'm sorry, denied conferences? That's, I'm wondering that too. Like where, where is the need for more time coming from?
So it's coming from feedback from our elementary faculty. They generally do not have the capacity in a two and a half hour block to actually see for meaningful discussion every.
No way, right.
So that's really where the feedback's coming from. So what they've ended up having to do is they'll do the, the, with the report cards. That's why they're getting two release days. They can actually conference with everybody. So the conversation with elementary was we already meet everybody at the end of the month, beginning, end of September, begin of October for, for curriculum nights, right? So they don't feel like, and then what was happening in the calendar was the first Wednesday in October was a release day for conferencing. They said that seems like a bit of a waste because we would have just met everybody for curriculum.
Right, right.
And we move that to align with reporting, right? So now that they do the midterm check in, we'd love to be able to meet with, we'd meet with families after we send that report so that people could sort of come in and check in with us. Every, but that wouldn't necessarily be everybody. They'd really target those kids who, who sort of might be at risk or might be struggling in the, with the classroom. With the report card, they'll, you'll see the two release days together because generally their feedback is 98 to 99% of their families will schedule conferencing for the report card conference. Which is where we try to give them sort of two afternoons back to back. Again, it's just a draft, trying to, to support them and really building and sustain those, those relationships and conversations with families. And then the fourth day, and they've always had four. But the difference, what we're doing that's different is we're trying to align them with reporting versus them being every other month releases. You know what I mean? And then preserve the monthly releases for PD, but then move around the conference days to better support when we report to parents, student progress.
Right. The other thing I wanted to mention about the election, I feel like sadly, this is like a depressing stat, but like our, our town, our, our voting numbers are not very good. So I didn't know how much of an effect those, the voting will have in terms of like canceling, canceling the first day of school or postponing the first day of school. I don't know if it's 100% necessary if we could have, I mean, even if you had like an officer present instead, just to make sure that corridors are blocked off, like, you know, I'm thinking of like South School or it's not in South School, but if it's just the gym utilized. I know it's parking, I know it's parking, but at the end of the day, our numbers are so bad in this town for voting that it's like, is it about that big of a deal? Is another question I'm wondering, but I guess that's up to Rick Swanson to determine because the middle school is saying it's okay.
Yeah, they don't experience, they have a different setup though, right? Like, so where you'd enter the middle school to vote is you'd have to actually, the, I mean, the high school can set it up. And then we use, they'll use the health classroom, we use the gym.
Right.
It becomes a space issue on the first day. What I will say is at this stage, we're just collecting feedback, right? So I'm happy to go back to Rick and sort of, sort of give him a sense of the, the feedback. But he wants to meet with his team as well as the safety team there, just to make sure that like we can either do it or not, or have a recommendation. And we're also following up the town clerk to, to get a sense of what the town is requesting. Was it just a heads up? Were you asking us, and I have a school? We generally wouldn't have held school on presidential elections, like that's was usually the rule of thumb.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but the logistical challenges presented over the last few elections have actually facilitated us looking at that differently. So.
And no middle school teachers have requested, or there hasn't been an, an issue in terms of middle school teachers don't want conference time? Is that not?
So it's not that they don't want it. No, it's not that they don't want it. It's that it's, that historically was never put on the calendar.
Yeah. That, that concerns me a little bit. I don't know if anybody else on the school committee thinks about that as, um, I don't know. I feel like, like you think of these sixth graders who've like had this crazy past two years and they're jumping into middle school and there isn't really any formalized time to, to meet with them. You're, you're, you're shooting off emails like, hey, can I catch you? Can I catch you? And nobody seems to be able to catch, but I'm just wondering if maybe it's something that culturally to really start bringing parents into the middle school, which I think historically is something that's like after elementary school, it's like hands off, see ya. Maybe sort of bringing people, parents into the building for something like a conference night. Cause we haven't been in for curriculum nights either, that it, it might be a nice thing for parents to get to. I don't know, be invited in, meeting the staff and having face-to-face conferences in some sort of organized format. But all right, my three minutes is up, so I'm going to stop.
Yeah, I'd just like to note that the elections we're talking about are this year, this coming year would be state elections, which are a different turnout than local elections in Hingham. And I, I would say on middle school conferences in the past, they've tried to do conferences as a full team of teachers and not just one student, one teacher with a parent. And so I, I think it's worth looking at if there's a chance, but you have to get all, the whole group together. And so in my experience was that it was encouraged to do it as one-off as opposed to, you know, there's only so many kids you can accomplish. For the teacher. So it's, but it's definitely something worth considering.
Definitely. Well, thank you for putting that all together, Jamie. And yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing some feedback from the HEA and from the building administrators. So. All right. So next we have subcommittee and project reports. Michelle?
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'll be quick. Building Committee, we're met on Wednesday, last Wednesday, we're meeting every other Wednesday at this point. As Jamie noted earlier, we got the good news from the MSBA that we have approval to move to schematic design. We completed our annual report, right, SD's drafted that and the committee approved it and received, you know, project updates from the OPM and the architect. PRS, the window and door project is also coming along nicely. We are actually at the point where we're picking out colors of the paint and the materials that are going to be used. Metco update, we had the Metco family meeting last Wednesday as well. It was a great, great event, a nice meeting on Zoom. There was a curriculum update with the families. Talked a little bit about trying to see if there's a way to change the time that GCP, sorry, Global Citizenship Program and some of the other clubs meet to increase access for the Metco students. Cause if it's early in the morning, it's difficult for the, with the transportation for Metco students to come. But Global Citizen Program came up in particular because it does have an academic piece to it as well that we wanted to, to discuss. Kindergarten registration, we had a kindergarten, or I attended the kindergarten registration that Carol Perez put together for potential incoming families. This is the, this will be the third year that we've had a Metco program for kindergartners. The last two years has been very successful. And it's, it's a long day for those young children, but it is a great introduction to the Hingham Public Schools and it's just such a great way for them to start with their classmates in kindergarten and follow together for, you know, the next, for the total 13 years. There was one thing that we were talking about, just to let folks know on the kindergarten tuition rate that is reimbursable through the Metco grant. So I think maybe Carrie, were you going to talk with John and Gary about that? And I think that is it, other than the East Principal search starts on Tuesday with our orientation meeting.
Great. Yeah. And I did ask Gary to, so we will put it on the agenda for the 21st. For the Metco kindergarten tuition. Jen?
Yes, I have, I will be attending the SNAP meeting, which is tomorrow. And then I will be attending the foster school council meeting, which is on this Wednesday. And then policy, we met last Wednesday with Steve Jones to work on updating the memorandum standing with Hingham Public Schools. And then the subcommittee will meet again on March 4th.
Great, thank you, Jen. Ness?
Hi, yeah. So we had a finance, capital and facilities subcommittee meeting earlier today. So a lot of what we heard is what John had presented earlier. We also heard from a community member on an update on a build out, a possible build out of a wellness center at the high school. So that it was basically just an update and guidelines was as far as what we would need to see from a school community perspective to approve that. So that was all I have.
Thank you. Carlos?
I don't have anything new, but I just want to add to what Michelle reported in terms of, and the Dr. Lavoie that had mentioned earlier in terms of foster. That's great news indeed, and I'm very excited that they actually approve the, you know, the replacement of fosters, not just renovation. So that's a big deal. In addition to that, they also approved that that would be also build with the possibility of serving the kindergarten, the pre-kindergarten, which is great because we've been looking for a house for the, you know, pre-kindergarten, you know, two houses, one in one place. So that does, does a great news. And I'm very pleased to hear them. So just want to add to Michelle's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tim?
Uh, I'm gonna be sending out uh some dates to people about the special subcommittee, hoping to get that in the last two weeks. And did we ever finalize the date for the next office hours? We kind of threw out a couple of options, but I think we dropped or I dropped the ball on that. So I will uh get dates out for that and make sure that gets planned.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tim. Um, Liza?
Yeah, um, so salary negotiations, we haven't needed to meet. Um, we covered it in executive session. Uh, the wellness subcommittee met on Friday. And we talked about the district wellness committee that Suzanne presented on. We also began reviewing the information that we've received from the various supporter groups. It, we have gotten, I would say probably about 60 to 75% of them. It's fascinating information. Um, people are doing a lot of uh excellent work on behalf of our students. But it also raises a lot of questions that we have. So um, we've started making a list of recommendations of things that we should look at from services standpoint and also um looking into finances. And so one of the things we also talked about was the potential raising of the athletic fees for the future. And at the recommendation of the athletic director to me was to keep a single fee because we have such high participation, but, and raise that amount um and for a, you know, a set amount, and then also raise the supplemental fees for ice hockey and the, the other teams as well. And one of the things that he mentioned to me is if we had gone to a plan of having a fee for one sport and then a supplemental fee for a second sport or a third sport, that requires a lot of administrative time. And right now, our staffing um would not be able to handle that ad, additional administrative responsibility. But the other thing that as Michelle and Ness and I were looking at the information we received from the booster groups, we've recognized that we need to do more work at evaluating the athletic department. And we've started a list of recommendations of information that we need to capture to be able to understand how athletics operates. And so that our recommendation on the fees is to do uh an increase, you know, a, a small increase now, but then to do a deeper dive and potentially reorganize the athletic department and consider um, all the expenses the boosters are covering and what are we covering in our budget? And to get a better sense of the whole operations of athletics and then relook at fees again as well. So, yeah. We have a lot, we've gathered a lot of information. It's a lot to sift through, um, but more work needs to be done on that. So.
That's great. Thank you for you and your committee and all the work on that. Um, all I have is PRS school council is meeting on Monday, um, March 14th. Does anyone have anything under 48 hours? Carlos?
I just want to say that, you know, I'm, I'm glad that uh today is the seventh. You know, um, many uh students that returned from the uh break, uh, thank God. We not experienced any major uh, you know, issues with COVID. So that's a plus. Uh, so let's continue practicing uh good hygiene and wash our hands. And there's a lot of cold going around. People still getting sick, so let's keep the practice going. I don't mean to preach to anybody, but uh, it's good that we keep uh our, our students uh healthy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
No, I'm an a as well. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.